You ready?
Good on that.
Good evening, and welcome to our first school board meeting for the 2022-2023 school year. Ms. Jamison, six members are present. Mrs. Smith is not here. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh, thank you. First order of business will be the presentation and recognitions. There are none tonight. The student principal reports, I'm sure they're all busy in their schools with back to meet the teacher night, day and night, and we're up to delegations. We have two members in the audience wish to address us. Our first would be Mrs. Sheets. Oh, before, Ms. Sheets, I'm sorry, before you begin, may I read my little bit? Not on your time, okay? Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding Culpeper County Public Schools. There will be no action taken by the board at this meeting, and such items will be referred to the appropriate administrators for future information and research. Personalities and behaviors of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. Each speaker shall limit his or her remarks, excuse me, to three minutes. No speaker shall be permitted to allocate any portion of his or her speaking time to another speaker. No speaker may address the board more than once per meeting. Delegations wishing to address the board are requested to sign in prior to the meeting with their name, address, and topic. A sheet for this person's purpose is provided at the entrance to the meeting room. Mrs. Sheets, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening. The history and social science standards of learning for Virginia Public Schools are currently up for revision. There is a public comment period open through September 25th, and the revisions are to be implemented in November of this year. There are 400 pages to the proposed K through 12 standards. I've read them all. I have many concerns with these standards, but I'll limit my comments to two main concepts tonight. The most notable change in these standards is that the United States is now defined as a democratic republic. According to these new standards, we are no longer a constitutional republic. This is simply not true. The USA has been a constitutional republic since 1789, whereby elected officials are representatives of the people and must govern within an existing constitution where individuals have certain inalienable rights. However, in a democratic republic, a voting majority has almost unlimited power to make laws where the rights of the individual can be overridden by the will of the majority. This is not our America. Words matter. If we allow this fallacy to be taught in our public schools, we are one generation away from losing the freedoms for which our forefathers thought, fought. The idea that our local school system should teach this misconception is ludicrous. Concern number two. To those of you who say Culpeper Schools do not teach critical race theory, I implore you to read closely the history and social science standards. Tell me how many times "race" and "racism" are mentioned in the curriculum. Then count the number of times historical events are taught as seen through the lens of race. You don't have to use the words "critical race theory" to be teaching critical race theory. Governor Yonkin's first executive order called for an end to the use of inherently divisive concepts, including critical race theory, in Virginia's public schools. These standards of learning directly contradict the governor's executive orders. Until Virginia's standards of learning can meet and fulfill all 13 directives set forth in the Governor Yonkin's executive order, I propose that the SOL test be eliminated for the 2022-2023 school year.
Ms. McDonald?
Good evening. I'm simply going to be reading to you Governor Yonkin's executive order number one, little bit. By virtue of the authority vested in me as governor, I hereby issue this executive order to ensure excellence in K-12 public education in the Commonwealth by taking the first step on day one to end the use of inherently divisive concepts, including critical race theory, and to raise academic standards. Political indoctrination has no place in our classrooms. The vast majority of learning in our schools involves imparting critical knowledge and skills in math, science, history, reading, and other areas that should be non-controversial. Inherently divisive concepts like critical race theory and its progeny instruct students to only view life through the lens of race and presumes that some students are consciously or unconsciously racist, sexist, or oppressive, and, excuse me, that other students are victims. This denies our students the opportunity to gain important facts, core knowledge, formulate their own opinions, and to think for themselves. Our children deserve far better from their education than to be told what to think. Instead, the foundation of our educational system should be built on teaching our students how to think for themselves. Virginia must renew its commitment to teaching our children the value of freedom of thought and diversity of ideas. We must equip our teachers to teach our students the entirety of our history, both good and bad, from the horrors of American slavery and segregation, and our country's treatment of Native Americans, to the triumph of America's greatest generation against the Nazi empire, the heroic efforts of the Americans in civil rights movement, and our country's defeat of the Soviet Union and the ills of communism. We must provide our students with facts and context necessary to understand these important events. Only then will we realize Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream that our children will be not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. The Constitution of Virginia requires that the governor shall take care that the laws be faithfully executed. It further provides a right to be free from any governmental discrimination upon the basis of religious conviction, race, color, sex, or national origin. Critical race theory and related concepts are teaching our children to engage in the very behavior the Constitution prohibits. And then the 13 points are listed, which I don't have time to go into. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the audience that wishes to address the board tonight? Well, then, I thank our members who have spoken to us, and we are moved to a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. There are no action items at this time, and we will move to the superintendent and staff reports. Our first is superintendent's update. Dr. Bradz, if you would like.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Madam Chairman, members of the board, it's just a few items that are requirements this time of year to make the public aware of, based on some school board policy items. I'm going to go down the list quickly here. Ms. Jamison's going to help me by putting those items on the screen. The first item is cost per pupil, the policy that requires that, and that that has to be available, and we'll publish that. That will be another attachment. Also, that school board policies and regulations pursuant to policy BF, that they're available pursuant to, through your board docs. And update the use of facilities and outside organization, that policy and requirement for facility usage and public use of school facilities, that's in your school board policy. And keeping the record of those items is contained on the website with a revolving calendar of those events, so that you can see those on a regular basis and not just see those on a monthly basis. Ms. Jamison now has the cost per pupil. As you can see, the last actual was from FY '21. We just finished FY '22. Those final numbers will not be in until later this fall, and you see the proposed budget for state funds, sales tax, facilities, and federal funds, et cetera, for the proposed budget. So that's an annual obligation that we have to make this public. These items are mandatory, obligatory items that we put out there. They're important, so we wanted just to let the public know that they are available. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have about these required items that the school board has to make the public aware of.
Are there any questions for Dr. Bradz on this? Thank you, Dr. Bradz.
Thank you.
Our next report is instruction updates. The Summer Academy, we'll start with Ms. Lane.
Good evening, and thank you for your interest in our summer programs. I have three pages and notes, but the more I do this, the larger the print gets, so don't be afraid. I'm certainly representing the instructional team, my boss, Mr. Harmon, and then special education, Adam Quanzy, Susan Campbell for Gifted, and then Laura Hoover and I worked with Summer Academy. So, we serve general education, special education, Title I, Gifted, and ESL. The programs are funded with federal, state, and local funds. A big portion this year was S R three, which is federal funds. Learning happens all year, doesn't take time off, and neither does CCPS. The novelist Peter Klein said, "School should be the best party in town," and we agree with that. We employed over 240 staff this summer, including teachers, paraeducators, nurses, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, bus assistants, admin interns, and other specialists. School nutrition services served over 5,839 breakfasts and over 7,577 lunches. Summer Academy was housed at our elementary schools, except Pearl Sample and AG were combined at Pearl Sample, and the secondary was housed at CMS and CCHS, and that was to consolidate for transportation and food services. We served over 739 students, rising first through 12th graders, elementary 512, middle school 110, and high school 114, and 104 credits were recovered over the summer. It ran June 13th to July 14th. We had off the week of July 4th. It was Monday through Thursdays, eight to one, four weeks. Transportation was provided. The instructional focus was reading and math and credit recovery with STEM and technology embedded. ESL and SPED services were also available at Summer Academy. ESY, which is Extended School Year, it serves our special education population. That ran June 13th through July 21st, 8:30 to 11:30, so it was half days. It was at Culpeper County High School and Yao Elementary, with transportation provided, and that program served over 156 students. And the number of staff that I'm going to list was embedded in the first number, but it was 15 teachers, 31 paras, two nurses, seven related service staff, that's speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, et cetera. It's preschool through post-high, and the attendance was 90%. So the students who came, their attendance rate was 90%. Summer Quest, which is our regional governor's school, served 5th, 6th, and 7th grade Gifted students. Culpeper County, Falkir, Madison, Orange, and Rappahannock participated. It was held this year at Emerald Hill. It ran two weeks, July 11th through the 21st. Parents provide transportation. Students were selected through an application progress, including a student essay and school recommendation. We had, Culpeper County had 20 students attend. The theme was Super Quest, focusing on Star Wars, and I think Ms. Campbell's wearing the T-shirt. From astrology to space research to solar system experiments. And then there was a student field trip to cosmic bowling, which I want to go after reading this. So that is a big summary of our snapshot of our summer programs, so if you have questions, good help in the audience, too.
Are there any questions for Ms. Lane? Carrie, was there a pre and post for the children attending for intervention, more or less?
Elementary through middle, high school's a little different with credit recovery.
Right.
And for, I can tell you that we use our screen scores for, because it's four weeks as the pre.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Thanks.
We are now going to have our human resource update for the 2022-23 school year, staffing update, and I'm thinking it's Dr. Bradz.
Don't panic, I'm not Ms. Metzger. I'm pinch hitting for Ms. Metzger, she's slightly under the weather, but we want to share this information, the exciting information for the start of our school year. I will say what I said in my video presentation, because for the first time in 18 years as a superintendent, I missed the first teacher workday, but I had a good reason to do so, and vacationing with my family, in particular, my grandkids, pretty exciting. So thank you for that, and allowing me to be away, and actually being there via the magic of video. And I'm not up for any awards, I promise, but the message was delivered, but it was one of my favorite days, along with the first day of school and graduation day, so I like to tell that story. So, the week before last, I believe, we had, on July 26, 27, 28, our new teachers came, had different activities. Thank you to the board members who were able to come. I know your schedules are busy, but if you stopped by, we appreciate that you did that. You can see some of the items that they worked on. We are always trying to be cognizant of getting them oriented, but also getting them in their schools, and getting them in their classrooms, getting to see their mentors, and I'll talk about mentors in just a little bit, but those are some of the things, time in the homeschool, the PD, the technology component of that, and also working on professional development with a theme this year of Pi, Passion in Education, with instructional department rotations. If any of this, you have a question, please ask me. I have fantastic people in the audience that can elaborate, so, if needed. That's what we did with our new teachers. Also, we had an activity, as you can see some of the things going on. All the schools put together a little goodie basket, and they do a raffle, which has become quite exciting, so that each school and any member can receive the school raffle, but each school puts together a basket of goodies, typically Culpeper-themed items, and you know they compete with each other, trying to come up with the best basket. So, anyway, that's a lot of fun that they do that process. Want to provide you with a position update, as, you know, inquiring minds want to know, and you hear a lot of information out there about the hundreds of teachers that are not in school divisions across the Commonwealth. Well, that would not be Culpeper County Public Schools. We are not in terrible shape. Do we have a few positions unfilled? Yes, we do. As of today, this moment, what you see on the screen, that's all the vacancies that we have. At EV, a math and learning support, that's a special education position. CCHS, English math. A business position, that's economics and personal finance. That can be a multiple licensed or endorsed person to do that, history and ESL. And we have a few special education positions that are budgeted positions. Haven't filled the budgeted positions, but we've covered most of the areas that we need to cover. We are looking to fill those with qualified applicants and/or those folks that can work towards a certification or endorsement. But when you look at that shortlist, I think that's pretty phenomenal in terms of our staff to include, but not limited to, teachers by word of mouth telling folks, "Come and join us, come back to us," and I'll mention that in a second. Our principals going through many panel interviews to get, to get talent back onboard or onboard with us, certainly our central office staff, but in particular, HR department, so pretty, they are obviously the engine behind all of it, but kudos to all of those folks in our, in our HR department who get this done. So, the next slide, I got ahead of myself, but that's the good news. We're in really good shape. We have, we're onboarding 108 positions, and at this time, we're talking teachers. Later on in the school year, we'll give you more updates about classified staff, and I think Dr. O'Brien will talk a little bit about that as well, but in terms of those folks that matter to the instructional process, which is very, very much what we do, that's the most important thing that we do, is instruction, we have 108 teachers. 18 of those folks are going to be what we term long-term substitutes, but understand, that's not a substitute person. They're under contract. They're under contract, but it's not a teaching contract. They're working towards licensure, they're, they're going to be eligible for licensure. This is where your work with mentors and tuition assistance, and I think we advised you all that we received yet another grant in the amount of $30,000 to help with tuition reimbursement. Folks are thinking about teaching now because we can help them get the coursework they need to be licensed teachers. So that's how that works. So don't, when you see a long-term sub, that's not every other day or kind of thing, right? That is the position in that position. Of our teachers that we have, so that you think about that 18, that's just over 2% of our teaching force. So that's not a lot that's working in that capacity. Now, on the previous slide where we still have those vacancies, that's not, they're not included in that, we still have those vacancies. What happens Wednesday, Dr. Bradz, when we don't have that particular one you showed on the screen finished? We do what we do. We have extra blocks, we have people come together, we have substitutes from the regular sub-list come in, if that has to happen, which we run about 100 substitute teachers on a regular basis, not in the schools on every single day, but we have that cadre of folks available. So we will make it happen, no matter what, what we need to do to fill those, those positions. Sometimes that may be combining sections or something of that nature, keeping a very close eye on our class size. Class size is very important to us, and also particularly with our Title I schools, we've got to stay at a certain level so that we continue to receive from the state class-size reduction money through K3. So we have to keep those numbers down in order to continue to receive that money, and we will certainly do that. Again, I mentioned the tuition reimbursement, extremely helpful getting new staff license. We have six paraeducators attain their teacher certification, moving into the teaching ranks. Of the 18 above there, 10 are paraeducators. So those 10, we know, and they're working on their licensure, so we were anticipating that at least 10 of those 18 will pretty much roll from paraeducator previously into a teaching position, a licensed teaching position. Seven substitute teachers are moving into teaching positions. Now, don't confuse that with the first barb, okay? That's someone who was on the off-and-on, everyday sub-list, a licensed person that said, "You know what? I like this enough. I want to be not a part-time teacher, I want to be a full-time teacher." So we've nabbed seven folks who were previously seven teachers. We've had four teachers who were in our ranks that are now for this year, excuse me, administrators, and you've seen that in the information that's been shared for CCPS News and our administrative report update that Ms. Hoover's provided, so you have some of that information. And I'd like, like the last bullet there, it says nine former employees were rehired into teaching positions. In some cases, if they did not attain a tenuring contract before they left, they had to come back to Culpeper County Public Schools, and Ms. Baker knows what that means, so do all of you, but in particular, they had to start over with that probationary period, probationary period as it relates to the evaluative process, not to the licensure process. There's two different things between probationary, that's the evaluative process, provisional is the licensure process. So that says a lot that we have nine formers who checked out the grass, it wasn't as green as they thought it was, and they came back to us. So that's, you can take a lot of pride in that and things that you've put in place, from budget items to support, tuition assistance, mentoring, bonuses, those kinds of things, folks have come back for that. So that's, that's pretty exciting. I will say, since I mentioned a little bit, and I don't want to confuse you about probationary versus provisional, right? We have probably with the year two and year three probationary teachers in the, in the cycle until they obtain continuing contract, and this onboarding class, probably about 90 folks that are what we call provisionally licensed folks. That's somewhere in the neighborhood of 12% to 13, almost 14%. Well, that's pretty remarkable, because statewide, the last statistic that I could find from 2018, because as you know, I was heavily involved with some work groups on teacher shortage. At that time, in 2018, the last snapshot that I can find, the collegiate professional license and the postgraduate professional license combined was about 58%, I believe. The rest were provisionally licensed, provisional or provisional special ed or provisional CTE. So we're well ahead of what happens regularly in the Commonwealth with respect to a provisionally licensed teacher. A provisional license is not a bad thing, it's a starting point. All career switchers start with a provisional license. They don't come out of the gate with bam, a collegiate professional license or a postgraduate professional license. professional license or a postgraduate professional license. They have to go through that process. So, we applaud your efforts to help us, help them, because it's critical in those first five years to have them get what they need so that they can stick, because that's the critical mass. A lot of folks that enter into the profession via provisional license, they don't finish what they start. Lot of times, that obstacle has to do with funding, funding the classes that they need. You have nearly removed that obstacle. So, you should be very proud of that. Next slide, I'm not sure if I'm clicking this right. Is that the last slide?
Yes.
That is the last one? Okay, thank you. That explains it, Elizabeth.
Yes.
Okay. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about our startup for this year. We're very excited about the folks. As you've seen them on a regular basis, we've had a good mix of experienced folks joining us and some brand-new folks joining us, some career switchers joining us, and as you can see from this slide, some folks that were with us who decided to come back. Happy to answer any questions you may have, within my ability standing here tonight to answer that question. Good? Okay, thank you.
It's not really a question. We're just all very appreciative of the effort that you guys put into filling our positions. We all hear about news at the state level, national level, about the teacher shortage, and it's simply wonderful that it's not affecting our district in the same way. So, we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Mrs. Luckenbaum. Mr. Shomo, finance report.
Good evening. I'm hoping mine's really short because, two things, we had a really good year in, and we're off to another year going. Waiting for some students to show up and get some counts going. Looking back at last year, just a few comments about that. Our revenues and expenses went favorably for us in the last 40 days since we last met. So, now we're looking a little over $5 million for a balance, hopefully. But it's not out of it. Still, a long ways to go to be tested and whatnot, but we're hoping we'll be in the same neighborhood we were last year, $5 million. So, that's the good news. Also, we were able to do pretty much the stuff that we agreed upon, what we were going to do at the closeout meeting, all that pretty much got accomplished. We stayed within budget, pretty much so with the Floyd T. Bins and our operating budget. So, it was all good stuff. Now, to the new year, you see in front of you, the new budget we're looking at is $112 million, an all-time record high. And that's built on 8265 for the ADM. And as of June 20, the June 2020 membership, we ended that membership, which we didn't get paid on. We were at 8224. So, we're almost right there, hopefully, starting out the year again. And hopefully, we'll be in the same situation we were last year, the whole budget, more students than we had built the budget on. So, it's looking like that. If any indications today, well, it's out of there in the schools, or back to school, and tonight, we're off to a great start. Again, we are moving forward with this budget, which you saw on the thing, the previous one, by $13,556 per student, we're anticipating trying to spend on these students this year, which has a lot of federal funds in it to spend. And the good thing is, we have met all the objectives that anytime anybody or anyone sends some stuff or some monies to be given to us, we've been shovel-ready. We've been able to meet or exceed what they wanted to give us so far. So, that's another good thing. That's about it for tonight. Like I said, we're waiting for the kids to show up. Everybody's ready, and I think we're fully supplied. Ready, roll.
Are there any questions for Mr. Shomo?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shomo. Operations report, Dr. O'Brien.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, all. Dr. Brad's. First off, thank you for this opportunity to be before you and to do the operations report, to give you a little bit about what's going on with the four major departments that sit underneath operations. This is a great quote that I came across from Robert Schuler that says, "Spectacular achievement is always preceded by unspectacular preparation." And that's kind of exactly how this summer kind of felt as we worked through all the different projects and all the different things that we were working on. Important, we have some older buildings, but it makes a big difference when you can get fresh paint on the walls. So, we did have painters working throughout the division. We provided four days to each location so that we could do some of those touch-ups and just make everything look fresh for when teachers and staff came back, as well as the students. We did a lot of HVAC work, which include replacing filters and dealing with the geothermal filters at Eastern View. As we know, in the past, they tend to get clogged, and then they kind of ruin the ability of it to do what it's supposed to do. So, we were heavily involved in replacing some of those filters and putting in some new stuff to help that system along. Plumbing, we did some backflow testing, which is something that we're required to do. Real plus is we turned water fountains back into operation, which, as you can imagine, a lot of students are happy to see water fountains working. We did have some stuff that was poured down those drains throughout the COVID period that we had to kind of clean out and do some fixture rebuilds, as well as we did all our sprinkler inspections as well. So, plumbing had their hands full this summer. Carpentry, we did a lot of door installs, which kind of speaks to the safety and security that we're really focusing on in the buildings, as we're all aware of the olvody tragedy and idea of doors being left open or not closing properly. We wanted to make sure we made an extra effort to make sure all our doors do close when you leave them. So, we did some extra door installs. We did some furniture assembly. Electrical, we did a lot of mounting of TVs, which is kind of our new standard in a lot of our classrooms. So, there's a little bit, you have to run power, as well as actually mount the TV, and we did some fire alarm testing as well. Custodians had a short window with all of the activities going on at our buildings throughout the summer and with ESY and Summer Academy. Luckily, they worked around spaces that were being used so that they could get their job done as well and get all the floors waxed and ready. And food service update, right now, we have 3,300 students who directly certify for free and reduced lunch. And so far, as of the time when this presentation was put together, we've already received income applications, about 330 of them, which is a good turnover. And our food orders were being delivered as of this last Friday. So, we do have everything coming together for food service, which definitely puts Mr. Beamer at ease. And we did some extra training with them as well. That helped out extensively for six of our schools. We added computer systems in the cafeteria lines. And overall, we changed out 16 different computers so that their data systems work better and they could run the School of Bucks project a little more efficiently with the new software and the new program. Finally, on the technology side, as you know, last year, we received some funding for 4,000 new Chromebooks that we've finally completed getting all those out, well, I would say mostly out, and got them distributed to all our kindergartens. We've enrolled new students, and we've updated and upgraded all of our devices from Windows 7 to 10. We did put out 120 new staff devices, and we finished some network infrastructure improvements at both AG and YAL as well. One of our big goals this summer, again, thinking about safety and security, were improving the cameras that we had. Some of the cameras we had in place were analog, and our preference is to have full digital cameras put into place. So, we came up with a schedule, and we looked at all the demands after doing some security walks with not just security personnel, but also with some vendors, and we determined that we needed a total of 316 camera install over the summer. We've got more than half of them done, and we're pretty close. I know this number's much higher since I started this presentation, because some of the folks, we've actually taken network staff to focus solely on making sure these cameras are put into place. We also added some camera systems to central office as well. But it's a big difference, as you could kind of see the clarity with the digital cameras. Over on the right, you really get a good view of what's going on in your building, and our school administrators and our security personnel can really see and get a sense for what's happening in their buildings using the Exact Vision system. Transportation, which is probably the most important thing to kind of talk about tonight. As you see, this is a picture of our staff and the new staff that we've included, which is our director, which is Stephen Bagley, and Lisa Peters as the transportation administrative assistant, along with our routing specialist, Joel Jamison, and Steve Scarfo, who's our assistant director. So, what did we do this year? Well, what we did was what we learned from last year. We wanted to make sure we were upfront, and we're communicating well with families, with the expectations of how things work, what are some of the steps that we need to be taken. And we did an explanation video that we posted online. We posted routes online as of August 1. We've had a lot of feedback from parents who are, you know, giving us, telling us, "Well, this isn't quite where it should be. I rode this bus last time." And sometimes there were errors that we corrected. And part of doing this is to get that feedback. So, we had plenty of time to make revisions to the routing. And we did some verification of that routing as well today. And tomorrow, we're going to have drivers doing dry runs, making sure they're getting out and that their routing is making sense. So, they're not going down a street that's too complicated for them to do a turnaround. They know exactly where they're going, what the expectations will be come Wednesday. We are very proactive in our communication. We've always had an email address, but we also posted an online form. We wanted to direct all the families to our website and use that as a better communication tool. So, that's what we started to do, and we really got a lot of feedback. So, I think overall, it's working to get that information out. And Mrs. Hoover's been supporting us and has been posting things as well and helping to direct the community to the website. We do have a bit of an increase based on our Power School data, that we showed 8,477 versus the 8,060 that we were at back in May. So, that's a significant increase based on what we see rolling into Power School. Now, granted, we know sometimes all those students don't show up on the first day, but we have to anticipate and we have to route for that number. So, sometimes when you're kind of doing the worst-case scenario when you're routing, it doesn't always look so good. It's early pickup time, and it's a later drop-off time, because you're anticipating all of those kids riding the bus. And when the computer system works, it's two minutes per stop. So, if you start to calculate and you've got a full bus, right there, you're pushing more than an hour sitting on the bus. And if you put some real distance in there, it becomes significantly longer. So, part of what we're trying to do is be realistic, but at the same time, try to put to bed some of the concerns that we're hearing when they see these routes. And again, we're trying to explain, that's the thing about computer routing. You really get the worst-case scenario when you put a whole lot of students on one bus on a very long stretch that they have to make. This year, as was mentioned last year with the idea of doing chase vehicles, we're actually going to post some vehicles at the schools, and we're going to have signage on those vehicles. We're going to have drivers that are going to have badges that can go in the event a bus is basically is overloaded or has too many students and they can't continue their run. We can have a van ready to go to grab an additional four or five kits that can bring them in, so that then we can redress where the issue lies. But the idea of having these chase vehicles, we think's going to give us a little added edge to be flexible and responsive when the parent calls and says, "Well, it said the bus was going to come at 7:25. The bus, you know, came at 7:05. How did that happen?" And we're like, "It's all right. We'll get over there, and we'll try to get a, you know, a van to come by and pick that child up." Stop Finder will be coming later, which is going to be that application where parents can actually monitor where their bus is at and where they are going. In the meantime, we have what I call kind of a stop-gap method, a division tracking sheet that's going to track the departure times of elementary and middle schools. We've already designated folks at the schools that are going to enter this information. They're going to put the departure time. It's been posted online already, so parents could start to acclimate to it and make sure they can find it. And it gives the information of what buses are first run, which ones are second wave, or town runs, or country runs, whichever verbiage you want to use. That's what's in there. So, they're already going to start to kind of get a sense where to go to find out exactly when their kids are leaving the school. This is kind of some of the things, screenshots from the transportation website to include the video that Lisa Peters helped me put together. And on the left, you can see we have all the schedules as AM and PM routes. And on the right is that form that we're using for folks to contact us. And now, I think we're up to, this says 226 requests. Right now, we're probably over 450. So, we have gotten a lot of requests for information. Part of what we've discovered is, we've put a lot of texts on there, and not everybody is reading or, you know, just basic literacy, not understanding all the details of what we're kind of telling families to do. So, this form helps, gives us an alternate way for us to reach out and talk to them. And it does result in correction almost immediately of routing, because we can identify what the problems are and jump right into it. The other thing that's kind of come to my attention is the idea of walk zones. And in the past, we've had a half a mile walk zones, and this year, our walk zones are a quarter of a mile. And we've done a lot of extra steps to look and see how kids in neighboring communities that are adjacent to schools can safely get to the schools. And one place in particular, I've walked a few times, and maintenance has put more pea gravel in and cleaned up the little bridge that connects us over to the meadows. We get a lot of students that come that route that goes around the transportation garage on their way up to CMS and CCHS. We do have, the one photo of the camera I showed previously is back there. So, a lot of parents who had concern about safety, their kids walking, we have them on camera as soon as they step onto school property, as soon as they come across that bridge. So, that's put a lot of fears to rest, knowing that we are monitoring closely how kids get to our buildings and the routes that they take. And we're just being mindful, because a lot of parents have legitimate concerns, and sometimes it's just a matter of, "Go walk it. Try walking it," you know. I've actually gone out and walked all of these. And a lot of them are really good, and they're safe and easy for them to do. Projects that we have ongoing are coming near completion. Electric buses, we do expect to get the two electric buses that we've covered mostly through grants in October. The charging stations are in place. We have two charging stations, which means we can charge up to four buses is our capacity right now. And all that work was completed. We're just sitting on, waiting for the delivery of those buses to come a little bit later. We've repaired and replaced a lot of the roofing at the bus shop itself. We did have some leakage and some rust issues that have been taken care of. And the big kind of shining star of our renovation is Floyd T. Bins. A lot of work has been done. Recently, and this was last week, they put the cabinets in, in the science rooms, and they're looking really good. And there's a nice stage with, that's ADA accessible that's in the theater classroom. And as you can see, teachers got in and started bringing their boxes. We were waiting on whiteboards that we expect to have delivered tomorrow and installed. They promised us they'll get them in before the first day of school. So, we're still crossing our fingers. And we got the PA system and everything in place and working, so we're very excited about this space and how it looks. Any questions? I tried to go fast. Hopefully, not too fast.
Yes, I have a question. I'm looking at our website, and I don't see any information on Stop Finder. And I was wondering, on the website, am I not able to find it? Am I overlooking something? Is it not on there yet?
It's not on there yet. We do have a, what we're going to call a communication blitz, and I know Mrs. Hoover's kind of working on that, and she's getting stuff from the vendor to help us explain how this app works, as well as how we're going to launch it. Because it's a little different than just going to 'Cause it's a little different than just going to a website. As you know, everybody has apps. You gotta go to the App Store, you have to download it. And we want to make sure that parents are going to the right place and getting the right information. What's frustrating now is if you go get the app, you, you really don't see or have anything. So we didn't wanna prematurely put this out and then have them go and be like, "This doesn't work, I don't want to use this." You know, we want to make sure it's more tied with some live information that we'll start uploading and putting into the system.
I know everyone is excited about it and they can't wait to, uh, have it up and running.
Absolutely.
I forgot, right? You go back to the slide, your dates.
Where at?
The dates for, uh...
Yes, sir.
Bus.
I think it was September fifteenth, yeah, and October fifteenth.
Fifteenth of September for elementary, and secondary is gonna be fifteenth of October.
The info blitz will begin before that.
Yeah.
But not too soon.
Not too soon. Thank you. Everything's staggered.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Brown?
Uh, yes, on that specific slide, um, why is the high school left off of the tracking system?
Part of our conversation with the high school principals were, we don't get a whole lot of concerns or requests for knowing when buses leave for high school students. Uh, we can, we can add it. In fact, the C M S one is C M S, C C H S, 'cause they're tied together. Uh, so if you go and you look at their tracking sheets, you're gonna have that. Uh, the only one that's really not included is Eastern View, and I certainly can talk to Dr. Bopp about whether or not he wants to have that tracking put on there, made available for Eastern View students.
And is the expectation that the buses will be at the schools before school starts?
That is the expectation. That is the, actually, ten to fifteen minutes before school starts. Because we do have the requirement, we want kids to be able to eat lunch and arrive in a timely matter, manner. But, and that's one of the challenges, because if they're coming earlier, then the start time gets pushed back even...
I just know there was a number of buses on C C H S and C M S campus last year that, I don't, I think one never arrived on time and could arrive a half-hour late or whatever else. So, um, I'm trusting that we have finished with that mess.
Well, I, I would say we finished with that mess in terms of getting in and making sure we have good routing in place. The challenge is always gonna be the unexpected. And the unexpected in this case is how many students are actually gonna arrive to ride the bus. And, you know, when you get no-shows, you're gonna move quicker. If you get a lot of extra kids, next thing you know, your bus is filled and you're gonna have to call in and say, "I need another bus, I need a chase van." And, uh, we're gonna have to be able to address those things on the fly. So there's always challenges for the first few days. And, and I know a lot of you have been around enough to know that transportation's one of those things that, uh, you know, you start to get it, start getting it going and start getting the routines in place, and they take a little bit of time. And even getting students into the routine of getting up and, you know, not waiting in their house and trying to listen for the bus versus getting out and being roadside to help that expedite the process.
Well, thank you very much for all of this.
Sure, absolutely.
Ms. Hutchins?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I have received numerous calls from folks in my district, as you probably have heard over the years, um, for the distance, particularly from Richardsville. And I know that there's no way to shorten that distance. Um, however, I am hoping that there are some plans in place to try to shorten, particularly for the elementary students, that ri- that challenging ride.
Yeah, absolutely. The pro-sample students were, we have been very cognizant of that and understanding the concerns parents have. I spoke to a parent for quite a while about that and trying to understand, how do we cut the time and make it more manageable? And, um, and it really is a challenge. It's just a challenge because of distance and the number of kids that you have. Uh, one thing that we're trying to encourage, we're, we're looking for more of the idea of the blended employee, the, you know, somebody who might be a lunchroom monitor and decides they want to drive and they live out in Richardsville, they have a bus, and we, and they could deadhead, they could have the bus out there, and then they could just pick up those kids as they come in in the morning. That would be ideal. So there are certain scenarios that would fix some of those problems, but it all has to do with getting the right person, the licensed person, into place and could start their run out there versus we gotta drive out and get them.
So do, we don't have anybody currently?
We, we don't, but we're looking. So that's one of my solutions, our solutions as a transportation department, seeing if we could get more of those kind of folks that might live out there and might be looking at, "Hey, I could do this part-time, I could drive in the morning." And that would make a, a lot of difference and help us in the routing.
I had a call today also from somebody on Mount Zion Church Road, the, where the, um, route was changed to a more dangerous pickup situation, but I'll discuss that with you.
Okay.
Um, I'm told that the email was copied to several folks, but, um...
Yeah, we do have...
Certainly need to try to address and, and make our pickups as safe as they can for the students, especially in the winter months when they have to stand up there in, in the dark.
And, and one of the things, really, the, the parents I've spoken with that have those kind of concerns, a lot of times, the drivers know better. So what the routing says and what the driver ends up doing might be something a little different. Um, knowing the driver's gonna be like, "That's not a good place for me to stop my bus." You know, I might the first day and then say, "Hey, tell your mom tomorrow, I'm gonna pick you up further back up the road." And those kind of things happen all the time. So, um, there is trust in the drivers, and I think they have a good sense for their routes and what they've always done. So we're, we're not gonna turn that turnip cart over when it comes to that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions for Dr. O'Brien? Ms. Desalee?
Just a comment that, um, I think that your, your beginning quote is wrong because I think you've put in spectacular preparation and your kudos to your team. You know, I'm...
Thank you.
I'm so impressed at the effort of trying to address all the issues from last year and think ahead outside of the box for this year. And it definitely, you know, I think we're as far along as we could get to being, being there and having everything be perfect, which we'll never be. But, um, thank you and your team.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
Are there any other questions, Dr. Bradz?
Uh, just, uh, Dr. O'Brien, uh...
Sir.
To drive a chase vehicle, they don't need a C D L., right?
Correct. No, they do not. Just comfortable driving a van.
Thanks.
Thank you.
There is not enough insurance. Thank you, Dr. O'Brien. Alrighty. We are now up to board member comments or reports. Ms. Hutchins, you want to start?
Thank you. Um, I want to thank the staff for all the work they've done all summer long. Uh, so many people have the impression that our, our schools are not being used during the summer and certainly from Ms. Lane's, um, presentation, if anyone paid any attention to the numbers, we, we know that our students are there and our staff are there all summer long, um, providing services to, to our students. Um, I attended the new teacher breakfast, um, and it was, um, exciting. The room was filled with great excitement, uh, for all those folks who have chosen to come teach with us. And, uh, a lot of the administrators were there and, well, all the administrators for each of the schools were there. And they were, um, being very welcoming and, and inclusive for the, for the new folks. Um, I was glad to hear that B I E. went way, went well. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. And I wish everyone an excellent first day and, uh, an exciting and great new year. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
I'd like to agree with Ms. Hutchins on the thank you to the staff and everything for everything everyone has done. For the custodians who, uh, do a he-man job in the summer when it's hot. And if you've ever been in a school when they're putting that wax down, I don't know how they do it. Takes my breath away. Um, and the cafeteria workers getting ready, the bus drivers getting ready. This is the, uh, time that is the most exciting, uh, to see all of it fall together. I went by some of the schools, uh, today, uh, even at the high schools. Lots of parents with their children, which is really good. Instead of just the kids showing up at the high schools somewhat running amok, um, it was parents with kids. And, um, just a very nice vibe going on, so I hope we stay there. And I thank all my colleagues here for everything that they do to help make this work, too.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Burnett?
I'm, I'm just gonna, um, reiterate basically what my colleagues have said. Appreciate all that our staff does to make school happen. Looks like we are very well-prepared. I can't wait to hear, uh, the kudos from our parents. And I'm, I'm just looking forward to a spectacular school year this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Desalee?
Just looking forward to a, a new school year and getting off to a great start, and appreciate all the hard work for summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Luckinbill?
Everything they already said.
And the same for me, everything that has already been said. So now we can move on. Thank you. All right, our information items. On-board docs are a summary, you'll find the summary of all of our committee reports. Future meeting dates are our administration committee meeting, capital planning committee meeting, and our next business work session is August twenty-second at the high school. And our finance committee meeting, next one will be September twelfth, which is right before our next regular school board meeting. We are going to go into closed session at this time.
The school board will convene in closed session at six fifty-eight to consider the filing personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-one. A, the appointment of certified personnel. B, the appointment of classified personnel. C, the transfer of certified personnel. D, the transfer of classified personnel. E, the separation of certified personnel. F, the se- sort of separation of classified personnel. G, the separation of a long-term substitute for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three. H, the approval of instructional supplements for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I, the separation of instructional supplements for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. J, the approval of an E V H S co-op student. K, the approval of long-term substitutes for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. L, the approval of substitute teachers for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. M, the approval of twenty-two, twenty-three fall coaching supplements for C C H S. N, the approval of twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three fall coaching supplements for E V H S. O, the approval of twenty-two, twenty-three coach, fall coaching supplements for C M S and Floyd T. Benz. And P, the discussion of student matters related to named students A, B, and C religious exemption as permitted by the Code of Virginia two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-two.
Thank you. We have a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all approved? Disagree? Okay. And then, thank you for coming, everyone, and we are in closed session.